Welcome. Welcome to the May 29, 2019 Regular Board Legislative Session. As we begin, we want to recognize and honor the first peoples of the Puget Sound Territories by acknowledging that we are on the land of the coastal Salish tribes. We'd also like to welcome Hemani Kalay, is that correct?
Oh, Hemani Kalay. It's okay, though.
Oh, it's not, I apologize. Who is joining us on the dais this evening? She'll have a chance to give her comments later in the evening, and we look forward to those. Ms. Ramirez, roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Present.
Director DeWolff.
Here.
Director Geary.
Here.
Director Mack.
Here.
Director Petu.
Here.
Director Pinkum.
Present.
Director Harris.
Here.
For those of you that would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please do so.
The United States of America, and to the Republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have our presenters from the Seattle Skills Center here? Okay, if the board members and the superintendent would like to... It's all up here. We're not moving. Terrific. Take it away, please, Mr. Golisman.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having us. I'm going to give a little bit of an intro, just a review of the Skills Center for our guests who aren't familiar with the Skills Center. I'll try to be quick and make sure there's time for... Plenty of time for Mr. Reed Forrester to present some student work and introduce our student who's here tonight. And he will lead most of the presentation with some examples of student work. So, just a little bit of background. So, I'm Dan Golisman, Principal for the Skills Center. And for members of the audience who aren't familiar with the Skills Center, we prepare students for college, career, and life, and we do that through our school year and summer programs. In the school year, we serve sixteen to twenty-year-olds, and in the summer, incoming freshmen through twelfth graders. And it's easiest to think of the school year courses as a half-day option school for career and tech ed classes, advanced career and technical education classes, our career-connected learning opportunities for students. And this is all part of the pathways that we're building from middle school on up into high school to give students opportunities to learn skills that they can apply right out of high school in careers, or go on to one, two, or four-year colleges, and even graduate school, to create a better life for themselves and create more opportunities for themselves and their families. So, all courses are credit-bearing, and many include cross-credits like math and science, and many of our courses offer free dual-credit, college-credit as well. Let's see, we have lots of different courses: medical careers, IT skilled trades like maritime vessel operations or construction trades. And one exciting thing that we're doing more of these days, we also have a course that prepares students to enter the career of teaching. And so, two of our students this year are heading on to teaching college and also the aspiring, or the Rising Educators Program through Seattle Public Schools. They're going straight from our course into that program, too. So, we have lots of different programs, and hopefully students take advantage of these classes in summer and school year. Also, this year, I just want to highlight some of our seniors are heading on to college and professional certificate-earning programs. Couple of examples: two of our firefighting students are heading to University of Alaska Fairbanks for their fire science bachelor degree program, and I believe they have full scholarships. I want to confirm that, but they have at least partial scholarships to do that. And then, several of our students, again, each year from our nursing program decide that while they love getting the Certified Nursing Assistant certification, they want to do more and keep going, so they're heading on to nursing college, so to get their either LPN or RN degrees. Let's see. Last but not least... Oh, and just a reminder, of course, that the CTE Annual Plan is being discussed, I believe, tonight, and that the Skills Center is included in those seven strategies in the CTE Annual Plan. And just to talk a little bit about the course you'll be learning about tonight, so tonight we'll be highlighting the Media Arts Course that's located at Seattle World School. And this course was developed with the generous support of the Paul G. Allen Family Foundation and the City of Seattle Office of Arts and Culture as part of our efforts around Creative Advantage. And just a reminder, the Creative Advantage is our citywide initiative to establish equitable access to arts education, and these courses that we have, Media Arts Course, several CTE courses during the school year, and then our summer courses as well, provide, or just an example of how we provide district-wide opportunities for students to engage in career-connected learning through the arts. So, I'd like to introduce Reed Forrester and our student, Zara Ahmed, and Zara may come up as well, I hope, yes?
Hello, welcome, or thanks for having us. My name is Reed Forrester, and I'm a brand-new teacher. It's my first year. I came out of industry. I've been a graphic designer for fifteen-plus years. And I had the chance to teach this class. Like Dan said, it's best thought of as like a half-day alternative college or class, high school. My kids come from all different schools, and they get bussed into my class in the afternoon. So, we've had two-and-a-half hours a day all year long to work on the, our various subjects, so there's really time to cover a lot of stuff. So, we start with graphic design and print media, then we move into web development and web design, animation is next, and then finally, we're, right now, we're in the middle of our AV production unit to wrap up the year. So, there's really a lot of time for the students to get some really deep experience and skills, and a really broad variety of skills as well. So, I just wanted to show you a few of the pieces that the students have made over the years, or over this year. So, we'll start with the print media. So, our first, our first assignment, it's the idea of Media Arts and the Skills Centers classes is project-based learning. So, this is a project where the students were given a brief, which is a short description of some, of a logo that someone needs. This one happened to be a sushi restaurant. And then, they work up various types of logo, various concepts, logo concepts. We started out with twenty-one logo concepts, then they had to refine to three. We had critiques, and then they had to polish their final version. So, my goal with this is really to give the students the experience of working for a client, which is a lot of what media arts and graphic design is in the real world. So, yeah, so there are the, there's the, these are like the stage of having three logos that were worked up. This was the final logo for a different imaginary company, which was a nonprofit film-focused company, so, in three different colorways, we had those. Next, we did some posters. These are twenty-four by thirty-six posters that are really large, and the charge for the students was to have a meaningful message and illustrate it. So, these are really impressive, like when you see them printed out on the wall. And this one is also funny. So, what the students are learning practically is to use the tools of the trade, which is Adobe Illustrator, Adobe Photoshop, Adobe InDesign for the print media stuff. So, then, these are more Photoshop. The stuff we've been looking at so far is Illustrator-based. So, this, the assignment here is to make a landscape out of pieces of photographs of food. And if you, I think I made it a little bit closer, you guys can see there's like cars made out of mangoes with like curly fries for wheels. So, we also, you know, try to have fun in the class, but there's a really a large amount of painstaking work that goes into being able to composite a whole bunch of different photographs like this. Again, we did movie posters, because that also is a, has, there's a lot of like really specialized techniques for compositing a bunch of different images in a way that looks pleasing. So, you can see, we had a movie for some guy and his dogs. And then, I wanted to, so we, I couldn't really, web development's a little challenging, so I'm not going to show you any examples from that, because it's a little challenging on the screen, but I did have a short clip for, of the, some stuff from our animation unit, and some stuff from our AV production unit, which we're currently in. So, the animation clips, there's going to be three of them, there's no sound, so don't be surprised about that. And they may seem really short, and the truth is, is like, animation is really hard, and it takes a long time to do. So, there's some short little clips, but they're really quite accomplished, I think, for the amount of time that we had. So, there's going to be three animation clips, including one is going to be the fishing person you'll see is a, is an example of a looping clip, so kind of like a GIF, if you're familiar with that. So, it'll loop four times, but it's constructed to be like a GIF, like to just go on forever. And then, there's going to be three little films. The first one is also silent, but the last two have, have sound. So, can we watch the video? So, yeah, we had, there was a lot of other great stuff, but I didn't want to take too much of your time, but it's been really, really fantastic to work with these guys. They're all amazing artists and really dedicated. Do you guys have any questions before we wrap up? All right, thanks so much.
Director DeWolff, is that a question?
Thank you. I'm curious, the short films, they're short.
Yeah.
But I, there's, it's likely like an iceberg, I'm imagining, so how much time do those shorts actually take? Because that's maybe ten seconds, but I imagine it's, I just, I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, the first two that you saw, there was, they had an assignment to tell a story in six shots. I would say we worked on that. Remember, we have two-and-a-half hour classes. I'd say it was a week, maybe, to get that down. And then, the last one you saw was, I believe, I gave, it was, I believe I gave them a list of like twelve shots that they needed to construct a story out of, and that probably we spent closer to two weeks on that one. Yeah, same with the animation. It's very short, but it's, there's just a lot of effort that goes into it to make it do, to make it look like that. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing your talents.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you. So, two things before I start my usual kind of presentation. I would just first like to acknowledge our dear friend and colleague who is moving on from Seattle Public Schools. Dr. Brenton Jones has accepted a position to help King County Metro expand their access to underserved populations. I will miss him. I know we will miss him as well across the district. I'll miss his leadership. In his second tour with Seattle Public Schools, Dr. Jones has planted and grown the seeds for the racial equity work that we are now doing and is established across the district. It is through his efforts, large and small, that we are moving toward institutionalizing racial equity, building a culturally responsive workforce, and creating a welcoming environment for everyone. And just so you know, there is a reception to honor Dr. Jones at the John Stanford on Friday, June 7th, from eleven to twelve in the third-floor comments, but Dr. Jones, if you would please stand so we can recognize you. Thank you for your years of service, and look forward to watching you do great things over at Metro. Second, I would like to call forward Gail Morris, and through the work and the advocacy of Director Pinkum continually asking us about welcoming and native language, you know, that we see the banners hanging in places in other schools and here, and why don't we have one for native language? Well, we have delivered. And so, I'd like to call forward Gail Morris to talk a little bit about this new banner that will hang here at John Stanford and across our schools in Seattle.
Hello, Board of Directors, Superintendent Juno, an amazing student. With the help of Nancy Bob, who is enrolled Lummy, and also Mukulshut Duamish, we put together a welcoming sign for Seattle Public Schools. It's something that we've been wanting to work on for quite some time, and we were, I was lucky to hire her to be one of my consulting teachers, and so, not only did we create signs for the lobby, but we're also teaching some of the language in our little after-school programs two days a week, and our students are extremely excited about that. We're going to move forward, hopefully, and start presenting this idea to do the welcome signs in the international schools, get those going, and then move on so that we can have them visible for all students to see the welcome sign for Seattle Public Schools. Before I roll that out, I just want to make two little acknowledgements as well. We also put the Leshutzi font on every, every person that's email ends with CLschools.org. So, that is on there, and we're excited that we've been able to use that as well. I think my staff is really excited to use that, and again, we couldn't have done that without Nancy Bob, who has really helped tremendously in getting the Southern Leshutzi going in the school district, and the importance of the visibility. And then, also, Director Pinkum and working with getting the adoption of five languages. We have some people that can help with that, which is the Leshutzi, Haida, Nez Perce, Lakota, and Dene, or Navajo. So, that's really exciting in case that didn't roll out. And then, finally, our film, I Am Native, won two awards. We won an award of, we won an award of Excellence from the Academy of Interactive and Visual Arts, and the Best of the Northwest Alliance for Community Media. In that one, I memorized its two provinces, Alberta, British Columbia, and seven states: Wyoming, Montana, Idaho, Washington, Oregon, and Utah. One for Best Instructional Videos. I'm so excited about that, so, thanks, Carrie. And now, we're going to show you the banner that hangs at the front door, both side doors.
All right, thank you. This says, "Welcome to Seattle Public Schools." I don't know, you can ask. Can you? Yeah.
Gail, before you leave, can you have someone read that in Southern Leshutzi, so we know what it sounds like?
Yes, Nancy was going to come with me today, but she had to get home. She had a childcare issue, and we're putting it together so that you can hear it, and we're almost done, so that we can mail that out, so people can learn how to say it in Southern Leshutzi. It's just taking a minute, because we don't have the right equipment to record it and then save it and put it, it's techno, it's technology jargon.
Coming soon.
We're coming soon.
Can I ask?
Sure.
One of our, because I know we have Tom Spears here, if he, would you know how to read that and pronounce it for us?
Pretty much. And you did good.
Thank you.
I hate to say it. Where are the words?
It's out.
I can tell you what it said. It said, "Welcome to little place where one crosses..."
Can you come to the mic, please, Tom?
I'm sorry. I don't have it memorized, but I could read it and understand it, and it said, "Welcome to little place where one crosses over," Zidzalalich, which was the name of the lagoon down by King Street Station that was all filled in now. But that was the name of the big, big Elliot Bay Duamish village, Zidzalalich. And then, it said, "Houses of Teaching, Schools." So, Nancy Bob did you good.
Yes, she does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gail. And then, I guess I'll just give you a little update. One quick call-out to our Amazon partners. This was the first time that I've been to the Spheres. They're pretty cool, so if you haven't visited, you should. Their living wall is almost as great as the one at Hazel Wolf K8. I had the pleasure, I had some students from my hometown of Browning on the Blackfeet Reservation who were in Seattle, and they stopped by to visit. It was really good to hear their voices and hear what they've been up to, and so nice to see these fierce young people in my new home. I just know they're going to continue doing great things. They were touring colleges and touring the area, and so, that was just a lot of fun for them to come in and see the work that we're doing at Seattle Public Schools and have a good conversation about that. These leadership students at Loyal Heights Elementary and their principal gave me a great tour of the newly remodeled Loyal Heights Building. This is a picture in their beautiful library. When I visited Thornton Creek, it was dressed like your favorite storybook character day. Some of these clever students were dressed as, I asked what they were dressed up as, and they said, "It's myself in the yearbook." Then I decided I was myself in the yearbook, because I thought that was a good idea. Thornton Creek students also created this game called Pogo. It's very similar to four-square, but different. It just, again, like, they were really nice to me and let me win this game, so I was thankful for that. It's not good. TOPPS K8 students were working on animal research projects. The young man on the left was so engaged that he couldn't be bothered to talk to me. Laurelhurst Elementary students were engaged in their reading. The little girl across from me tells me all about spiders and their lives, and which one was her favorite, so she knew a lot about spiders. View Ridge Elementary values art, as was demonstrated by these wings hanging on the wall. Emile and Ellery were great hosts, and they shared their perspectives about their school. These Wedgewood Marmots told me all about their library, and the librarian was just so very proud of their knowledge about the space. They were able to give the tour, talk about the books, talk about all the reading programs that are going on. These young Adam Middle School journalists asked tough questions about highly-capable programs, segregation in our highly-capable programs. They talked about the achievement gap, so I would just say, "Watch out, Dahlia, these students are coming after your job." Staff. Salmon Bay K8 Principal Garans believes in the K8 model as a means to provide leadership and mentorship opportunities for eighth-grade students. The eighth graders at Salmon Bay do things like supervising the playground during recess, they attend kindergarten field trips to support their mentees, and so, a lot of cool things going on, because they're able to build the system of a K8 and hang on to those students and build like mentorships and such. School administrators at Thornton Creek were dressed like Rock, Paper, Scissors from The Legend of Rock, Paper, Scissors. I think I need to read the book, because the review says it was very funny. These TOPPS K8 leaders gave me a tour of their building. Did you know that this, that TOPPS is one of the most diverse K8 and has a majority-minority students in the building? They're doing a lot of good work there. Laurelhurst Elementary with Principal Snyder. He's focused his first year on relationships with staff, students, and the community. And did you know that Tim attended Laurelhurst as a student? He joins a long list of Seattle Public School principals who work at a school they attended. View Ridge Elementary with Principal Russe and some of our Star War enemies. I said, "These are not the droids we're looking for." Principal Lou at Wedgewood is quite the dancer. In PE class, they were doing a dance party, and so, we participated in it. I didn't shoot video, because nobody needs to be subjected to that. But just know we were very good. Jane Adams Middle School with Principal Montgomery. Yes, we got photobombed. Jams is building a strong reading identity in all of her students. Kudos to her librarian and ELA staff for the intentionality in selecting diverse books so that all students can see themselves in the stories they read. My partner Dana and I attended the GSBA Scholarship Gala Dinner, where students were honored with scholarships, and Director DeWolff and I got to hang out in a reception line. I held a meeting with several tribes and community-based organizations working on American Indian issues to discuss our work... issues to discuss our work with native students and early literacy. It's a very powerful experience and I'm excited to see the great things that will continue in partnership with this group and others. This team, as we get strategic in our work, our partnerships become even stronger and I just want to thank Amazon for their continued support and I look forward to our continued work together. Thank you to the Alliance for Education for allowing me to give the opening remarks for their luncheon. We have so many people in our students' corners. This concludes my remarks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Hamani?
Kalala?
Hello?
You are up next and I get to read a little bio about you when I find it. Nathan Hale High School. I was remarking to one of your colleagues how distressed I was that I missed your extraordinary plant sale. So usually the second or third weekend of May, great deals, extraordinary quality and you will thank us later. Kalali is one of the strong student leaders at Nathan Hale and was recently elected the Associate Student of Nathan Hale President and will serve next year. She's been instrumental in the creation and execution of many school-wide projects including our recent Unity in the Community event and I hope she's going to tell us what that means. And she's been a leader in the creation of an inclusive and caring community. She represents Hale's best. So tell us, A, what you think we should know, what works for you, what doesn't work for you and why is Nathan Hale special? Thank you.
So just to start, I did not know I was going to be talking as much as they told me, but you know, these are things that I think about on a daily basis when I walk into school and when I'm in the leadership class and such, so I feel like Nathan Hale, we try and make progressions and make sure people are represented because if we're going to be in a diverse community such as you mentioned TOPPS, we need to have like staff that represent the students as well. So like an issue we deal with and at most schools too is kids skipping class. In high school, that's you know, even a bigger deal, but it's like, that's a danger of a single story. We're trying to punish these kids because they're in the hallways and stuff, but we're not questioning why. Why are they in the hallway to begin with? Why aren't they in class? There's an issue there and after numerous conversations, I mean, one issue is that these kids don't have teachers that look like them and that's the issue. And as a person of color, I can, I can say that I haven't had a teacher that looks like me. I make it happen, I make it work, I excel in school and the things outside of school, but for some kids, they need that support and they need someone that can represent them because imagine walking into a building every day for six hours a day, but you don't have someone that, that's representing you, that looks like you, that can understand how you're feeling on a daily basis in and out of school. I'm a junior as well and I guess this is the first time that I've been in contact with the district. This is the first time I've been to a school board meeting and such, so I feel like if more kids have the opportunity to do this, I mean, I'm not sure how this whole agenda works, I'm you know, just being real, but I mean, you guys are representing us, right? You're working for the school district, you're representing students, so I feel like if more kids had the opportunity, even at a younger age too. I've been in school, you know, since kindergarten, so I feel like this is the first time that I'm actually having contact with the people that make things happen every day and I appreciate it greatly, but there's issues that need to be addressed and I feel like a lot of the teachers don't understand that we have a life outside of school. We're coming to school with a lot of things on our mind and I feel like some teachers don't acknowledge that and just some administration in general. I would like to shout out Mr. Jackson, he is one of the Assistant Principals at Nathan Hale and I greatly appreciate everything that he's done for Hale because he addresses me as a human being, not someone that's lower than him or in any way. He understands how students feel and he's doing what he can to represent the students as well. We had a day, Unity in the Community. Mario will talk more about this, but this is a day where we suspended all classes and we had workshops about things that happened in the real world. Some kids complained, you know, if you're in a math class, like, "Oh, I'm not going to use this like 10 years from now," but we actually took a day to talk about things that yes, this, this is what you're going to face in the real world and he helped make that happen as long as, as well as me and Mario as well. Yeah, to talk about many things, implicit bias, Islamophobia, we had someone speak that was a Holocaust survivor and we made that happen and that's important because that's real life right there, you know? Yeah, I can, I can go, I can skip a day of math and science to learn about things that are actually going to impact me and relate to me as a person of color. I feel like there's, there's bigger world problems that affect our inner community problems as well, just you know, the injustice of people of color in the society, the lack of women rights as well and those things do trickle down and they affect inner smaller communities as well, like our schools and the little neighborhoods that we live in, but it's like, I feel like if we can start with our little communities first, we can make bigger impact elsewhere, you know? We're all representing different communities around Seattle. If we all try to actually take action, because actions speak louder than words, if we actually take steps forward and try to actually do something about things, that we can come together and make bigger change too. So, because right now I'm just saying a whole bunch of words, but I can prove it with the things that I've done at Hale as well and with the things Hale is doing and Hale is not perfect. There's times where we struggle, but I feel like we're trying with good administration as well. I mean, that's really all I had to say that I could think about, but if you guys have any questions for me, you may ask them.
Do you have ideas of where you're going after high school and what you want to accomplish and whether or not we, the Seattle Public School District, has done a good job to prepare you for those?
So I had a conversation with Mr. Jackson the other day about what I want to do outside of high school. I play basketball and my goal, my really small mindset at times, it has been to play basketball in college. I want to get my college paid for for that, but he helped me realize that I do bigger things as well, like I've been in leadership since freshman year, but not once have I really thought about what can I do with that? Literally like what can I actually do, what roles in society can I do with that? So he has helped me specifically. And I know that we have days within school like job fairs and stuff, you know, and most places do that, but I feel like that's something that needs to be focused on more because a lot of kids after high school don't have a plan really. They kind of just resort to community colleges, maybe like Shoreline, but even then they don't really have a plan, so I feel like we need to make adjustments on that too, because not everyone's as strong as maybe I am, you know, so yeah.
And I hear a rumor that a plan is going to be part of the curriculum in the future. Is Mr. Goldsman still in the room? Nope. It'll be part of the curriculum and Director DeWolf, please.
Yes, thank you, President Harris. Thank you so much for being here. You did great. My question is, what students do you believe, at least in your, from your perspective, does our school district make or not see or make invisible and how can we as a district do a better job of making those students feel seen and be visible?
I feel like this is the case at most schools, but specifically at Hale, the students that you may see in the hall that are skipping class are young men of color and, and young people of color in general and I feel that goes back to the issue that there are not leaders within the school who they can relate to and actually talk to. We have Mr. Jackson, but we don't have enough and I feel like that's one thing that we can, a step we could take in order to like fix issues like that. I just, I feel appreciated when I walk into a classroom and the teacher just genuinely asks me, "How are you doing? How's your day?" You know, "How's things at home?" And they're not getting all up in my business, but they're just simply asking me, you know? It's not like, "Why didn't you do your homework?" It's like, you know, "Are you good? Do you have time? Do you have the resources to do homework in the first place?" You know? I may have derailed from the question, but there you go.
Other questions? Director Mack, please.
You mentioned wanting to be engaged and help students be engaged at the district level. Did you know about the Student Advisory Committee to the Superintendent that we have, we actually, you know about that already?
Yeah, I've heard about it, yes.
Yeah, so I'm wanting to just kind of highlight that that is actually a really great way for students to get involved, but I'm not sure about the process of like will the membership be turning over for the coming year or it's set for this year?
Set for next year.
It's set for next year and then so the following year, there's a process that students apply to and how does, can you, do you mind sharing a little bit about how that works so that everyone knows that there's, you know, there is a way to engage and students have an opportunity to do that?
Thank you, Director Mack. We're actually working out the process and so this was the first year of Student Advisory Board. We have two students from each of our high schools that, there's a nomination process, they can nominate themselves, a parent, a teacher, anybody can nominate a student. The student then has to make an application to know they're serious about being on it as well. Then a group gets together and sort of goes through all those applications and we are building, we've invited two people from each of the comprehensive high schools, some of the alternative high schools to belong and we are heading into our third or fourth, our fourth meeting for the year, third meeting, third big meeting for the year, they've met interim and will be presenting some projects that they're going to engage in next year. So that's why we're holding them on, onto them for next year because they've developed workforce, you know, how to diversify our workforce, how to, if not great things are happening, our racial incidences or things that need to be reported, what are students' rights in reporting that and so they're helping us develop processes for that. They've looked at our health curriculum and are working with Lisa Love on our sex ed curriculum and kinds of, what kinds of content needs to be developed in that and then a group is looking at ethnic studies and how to make sure that that gets more robust in our high schools. And so there have been groups that have formed as a part of the whole board who are working on those individual things and they will present that to a group who will give input and then next year they'll sort of have a project at their school. So we'll hold on to that group for another year so we can kind of develop all that and then I think we'll come up sort of with a way to stagger terms on the board so that we can maintain some seniority and then half will cycle out and half will cycle in. So not next year, but the year after, watch for the half to turn over and invitations to come out. But it's been great and as I said every time, and we have Student Advisory Board member here right now too, every time I gather with them and hear the conversations, just like I'm hearing tonight, it's like if we are producing students like those students I maybe have the honor to speak with in our, in our school system, we're doing pretty well because they are strong, they are smart, they are powerful, they are wise and, and I just, every time I leave that, their presence, I'm just so hopeful for our future because, you know, I tell people it's like they are not the leaders of tomorrow, they are the leaders today and we need to work to catch up to them. And so just want to thank my Student Advisory Board for their leadership. Thank you for your leadership and just keep on keeping on.
Director Pinkham, please.
Katia, I want to, first of all, congratulations on your upcoming position next year and hopefully you'll continue to do great things. I've been to the Nathan Hale graduation last few years, it's the high schools in my district and what I really appreciate is that they do welcome everyone in as many languages that the students speak at the high school, so I appreciate that. You mentioned about the lack of seeing educators, teachers, administrators of color in your school. How can we help encourage students of color to pursue education as a viable career? Because I've asked this other people, they mentioned, "Oh, there's lack of teachers of color," then I ask them, "Well, would you be willing to become an educator?" They'll say, "No, I don't want to do that." Is education something you would be interested in?
Oh, so you're asking me personally? Um, yeah, um, yes, actually it is something that I've thought about because I've been in leadership roles one way or another, whether it's on the basketball court or in the classroom or for the school or for my class, so, and I just enjoy being the voice for others, you know, being the voice for those who don't have the confidence yet to speak for themselves, which is what I'm doing right now too. Like yes, I, as a representative of Nathan Hale, I'm representing Hale in a strong way, but that doesn't mean that like there are kids that are not struggling at Hale right now, you know? Not everyone may have the same confidence or strength as me, but going back to the question, yes, it's because I do want to be an educator, but I just enjoy helping and I enjoy helping younger kids in general too. I mean, I worked with special needs kids when I was in middle school and even now too, like I just take the opportunities that I'm given, that are given to my leadership and helping my class, now helping my school as well, so it's something I've thought about. I honestly, I don't know what I want to do for sure, like their concrete plan after high school, but I got time to think about that, but definitely that's something I want to do and just being a leader for the community.
Director Burke?
I, I think my colleagues have already given you some really good questions, so I just want to thank you for your energy and enthusiasm that you bring here because it really is contagious and so it's great to start out the meeting with smiles and, and the messaging that you're putting forward, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Can I make one more comment? You have time for that. Two things, someone brought up curriculum and that's, that term is thrown around, I feel like, and people have lost kind of like side the definition of it because I've heard teachers say, like when kids are passionate about learning something else, like we did a climate justice day as well in the unity of the community, some teachers didn't agree with that because they said that it doesn't go well with their curriculum, you know, and I get it, you know, they have a plan for the year, you know, it is what it is, but I feel like that's something that just has to be, I mean, addressed and like communicate with teachers as well, like just communication with teachers too, like this is, I mean, we try, like as students, like I feel like there's a tier, like you know, we've got students and then teachers and then, and you know, district and I feel like the students, when they're passionate about things, they will make it happen, they will communicate to teachers, but I feel like there has to be more communication from the district to teachers as well, you know, I'm pretty sure you guys got your plan with that, so I'm, I have faith, it's all good, but I forgot what else I wanted to say, but it's okay. Thank you for having me though, appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Now, here's the deal. If you stick around, when the board asks questions of presenters, you get to ask questions as well. So it might be worth your while and I suspect you've got some pretty darn good questions.
Okay, cool, thank you.
You are welcome and you will participate, don't get to vote, but you do get to ask questions. So wave or nudge Director DeWolf next to you and we'll make it happen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are at 6A, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion for the Consent Agenda, please?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda. Second.
Does any director have items they wish to take from the Consent Agenda? Saying none, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me? Well, we're going to Board Committee Reports now. Who would like to go first? I juggle and you protect me, so you're up, Director Mack. Chair of Operations Legislative Liaison, thank you.
Yeah, so going back to Board Committee Reports and also a brief touch base on the FEP levy oversight. There's lots of meetings recently, so for Operations, we had our last meeting on May 16th, the agenda's posted. If you want all the materials, I think there's some 400 pages there. You can ask the Board Office for those. We have 10 items that are coming into inter tonight. I don't know if you saw our agenda, but I think we have 25 intro items tonight, half of which are ops-related. We had some really good conversation around some model, some policies that are moving through and I think a couple of those are coming in the form of Board Action, more solidify the 6900 facilities planning and 6901 capital levying planning, as well as the other policies that we discussed and also the Advisory Committee for Facilities Planning that we've been discussing that will come in draft form in a bar, I believe. The Bex BTA Oversight Committee also had their meeting on the 17th. They did some great project updates around the buildings that are opening next year. I think we have four, five, ah, can't remember the number and it's not listed here unfortunately, but we have Magnolia be opening up, that's one, and Lincoln, right, those two. So those will have ribbon cuttings in the fall that'll be exciting to participate in. Watch out for those dates and times. We talked about the Portable Management Plan, they had a rich discussion around that. There's a bit of discussion around the land There's a bit of discussion around the landscaping at new buildings. And interestingly, they, somebody brought up the concept of do we reserve some of the landscaping area for science instruction, for gardening and that kinda thing? And so there's a, an interesting discussion there about, uh, the connection between curriculum and facilities. And we also talked about, uh, the GCCM, um, certification, the, and, uh, the district potentially becoming its own, um, certifier and the process for that. Uh, there'd be further discussions on that in the future. Operations also had, uh, well, a full Board Oversight Meeting on the 22nd on Transportation. All of those materials are, are posted. And that was a really good update on the progress that's being made around, um, improving our transportation services and some of the challenges that, um, we've, we've been facing.
Director Mack? Can I point something out in the middle there from the Transportation Work Session?
Sure.
It was stated affirmatively on the record, both by SEA staff and First Student Representatives who were in the room, that the story that suggested our bus drivers do not go through background checks and that the Great City Schools report addressed is categorically false and that each of our drivers go through background checks. Uh, that's an important clarification for the record?
Yeah, I think that's good to clarify, thank you.
You betcha.
Yep. Let's see, so the FEP LOC meeting, which is the FEP, uh, the Cities Levy, um, was on the 23rd. We have a rich discussion around the last year's report and future reporting. And actually some interesting conversations around data and what data's available, student privacy around that data, whether or not to have longitudinal studies of students going from preschool all the way up through. And next we will be having on June 5th, next week, a, a full Board Work Session in this room on student assignment, uh, plan, transition plan and boundary changes, uh, proposed and considered for the 2021, 20, 20, 20, 21 school year. We're already in the planning processes for those. That agenda and materials will be posted, uh, at least two days ahead of the meeting next week. Um, so look for that and, sorry?
I wanna interrupt. There's been some discussion about moving that particular work session, I believe? No? So people should be, I thought there was some discussion. So I was asked about it.
Stay tuned, folks.
There's been discussion. So just people should, if for some reason it switches, I just wanted to make it aware. Okay, and I apologize. I just wanna make sure that if it does move, that people check the Board Calendar. I was asked about an alternative date, so I apologize if I'm wrong.
So currently it's scheduled for the June 5th. Um, and if that changes, then we have a few days before.
And trying to coordinate seven directors and all the SEA, excuse me, the SPS staff to present to us is a magician's moment.
It's a very complicated puzzle. The last thing, the last, uh, update is the Legislative Liaison Work. The legislature is closed for the session, closed. They finished their work. Um, but I sit on the, the SWADA, which is the State School Board Directors Association's Legislative Committee. And we have our first meeting after session coming up this weekend, Friday and Saturday. Which means unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the retreat that's on Saturday. Um, that's been scheduled for four or five months and unfortunately, I'm really disappointed that I can't make the retreat this Saturday. And I think that that hits all the high notes and we'll have more, um, more later.
Director Geary, thank you. Chair of Curriculum and Instruction Legislative, um, Liaison as well.
Right. And, uh, there's a lot going on in Curriculum and Instruction, as many of you are aware. So tonight will be the vote on the, uh, three different science curriculum adoptions, elementary, middle school and high school. We also have a, a number of introduction items, uh, later on in the agenda as well. Um, I think the most exciting news is that at our last Curriculum and Instruction Committee Meeting, we moved forward to the Board for Introduction on June 12th, the STI, um, Bar, um, Board Action Report. So that we will be introducing Since Time In Memorial on June 12th. And should everything go as planned, it will be, uh, brought before the Board for Action on June 26th. So that we should have that taken care of before we are out for the summer and, um, in effect for the beginning of our new year. So I think that's really exciting that we managed to do that. So our next committee meeting is June 11th, uh, 2019, 4:30 to 6:30 here at the Board Offices. It's not quite as heavy an agenda as we've had recently. Two of the sort of more interesting policies, the dress code, with regard to the dress code and electronic devices have been removed from the agenda for the time being to do more public engagement and routing, to make sure that we've gotten that right. So those will, those will not be up for discussion ne- necessarily at our next, um, committee meeting. Uh, we will be looking at the Creative Advantage Partnership, um, the C SIP Annual Approval, the Open Doors Contract. And then we'll have some special attention items around our music programming, our ethnic studies update, the annual assessment, um, report around our testing schedules and an advanced learning update. And then we've added two of the special attention items because, uh, Chandra Hampson, the President of the Seattle Council PTSA and I, um, have decided to work on drafting or looking at creating an anti-racism policy for Seattle Public Schools. Because although we have the 0030 policy around racial equity, that we don't have one that actually is anti-racism. Um, and doing some research, there has been a district back in Virginia that actually brought an anti-racism, uh, policy and passed it. So we would have something to begin to look to model it, model it upon. But surprisingly, um, there are not more of those very definitive statements for policies in schools around our country. So once again, um, we'll be looking to draft something, um, for Seattle Public Schools and really looking forward to engaging the public on, and getting their input on that as we move forward on making safer environments for our kids. So take a look, again, the next committee meeting is June 11th. And, um, we're still moving forward and discussing the adoption, Policy 2015, which is our curriculum adoption policy, which has been at the center of much of the discussions lately. And then Equitable Access Quarterly Report Policy Number 2200. That's it, thanks.
Director Pinkham, Chair of Audit and Finance, thank you.
Tatsia, tatskalaot. At our last Audit and Finance, uh, meeting on May 20th, we had, uh, 11 bar items. And you'll see them all tonight. Uh, one was, will be an intro and action item. We had, uh, definitely been good discussions around them. Most of them had to deal with, uh, sped and some compliance issues that were required and mandated to do. Um, and, uh, so won't really kinda bore you with some of the legal issues that we have to go through in approving of these. But, uh, other issues that came up, uh, include like s- some of the bars that came forward. And the first one for the head start for preschool, they mentioned surveys. And we asked those things to be added to the bar so that we can see those and, uh, hopefully, you know, show that we are making good sound decisions. Also, I, I appreciate, uh, Director Mack's input on the replacement for fleet vehicles. As we're looking at that, discussing that, we're, uh, really saying, what, what funds can we use? And can we help save some money or use certain funds in certain ways? And, uh, they agreed that they'd look at that, but we're still wanna do an intro and action on that item tonight to see, uh, again, how best we can spend, uh, the money and fill the needs that we have for our diminishing fleet vehicles, looking at some of those that are like 30 years old that are still in our fleet. Uh, and thanks to our, uh, shop people who keep them running, but it's getting a little bit too expensive to maintain those vehicles. Other things we, a little informational, uh, only items we discussed at the last one, one included and actually, uh, noting that we do, as a Board, have two employees, the Superintendent and our internal auditor. Uh, and we were looking at maybe ways for how we can make sure, uh, the whole Board is overseeing our internal auditor, not just me as the Chair of Audit and Finance, that everyone can hopefully feel like they have a voice. And as we're looking at those things, yes. It could be more meanings, but, uh, I think it's kind of what we have to look at, what we commit to when we, uh, signed up to do this. We will have our next quarterly A and F meeting, uh, June 2nd, which is Tuesday. Again, this is something we do every three months. So if you wanna come out and see what's happening as we get the internal up, Audit and Finance Update every quarter, uh, to kinda check how we're doing and progressing with the different fundings and, uh, making sure we're in compliance. The next A and F meeting will be right before the Monday, before the CNI. I haven't seen the, the agenda for that yet. But again, if you can make it, again, come and listen to what we have discussed. Cause a lot of these things that are different committee meetings, that there is some thorough discussion on the items amongst the committee members. And then come in here, uh, to share it with all of you as well. So there's another opportunities for you to come and listen to discussion that's happening and that's at our various committee meetings. So watch for postings with those. Given the time, I really don't have much more to share with Audit and Finance. Uh, and again, the, the quarterly meeting, you'll also see what audits have been currently completed as well. But, uh, thank you, Tatsia.
Okay, last but not least, the Exec Committee. We met last Wednesday, a week ago. Uh, we discussed the Superintendent's goals. And we added back in an operations goal, which will be to redo the operations data dashboard in addition to reading by third grade, which braids through all of our work. And there's a healthy set of rubrics there that we're still working on. Executive Committee is actually fairly rowdy and thoughtful. And it's a good place to watch policy or the beginnings of policy happening. Uh, we also heard from our, we, about a year, year and a half ago, we started inviting in our labor partners just to chat what's on their minds, answer questions, et cetera. It's healthy, um, brutally honest. And we heard from our SEA partners, President Phyllis Campanio, Vice President Michael Tamayo, Race and Equity Director Marquita Prezing. And they expressed overwhelming support for the adoption of the science curricula that we are going to be addressing this evening. When asked if they had heard any pushback from teachers that were reluctant to come forward or were in fear of retribution, uh, they suggested one person. And, you know, we as Board Members hear from a lot of folks. Most folks don't sign their names, so you don't know what kinda weight to give folks. And if you're corresponding with us, please sign your name and tell us your story so that we can wait appropriately. And wait, W E I G H T, not W A I T. Uh, we also discussed the Hope For Process for the Appointment of the Successor to our beloved Director Betty Petu. And we hope to have that figured out next week. Make it very strong in community engagement. And are going to be inviting communities, especially communities in the southeast region of our school district to send in questions. So we can use those as part of our screening tool. And it's our hope that we will be in the southeast to meet the candidates. And after July 1, after we, we solicit and get a wide, um, group of folks that, that want to join our team here and work their hardest to do good things, then we will release those on the website. So it's a good, transparent and hopefully interactive process. We discussed the potential of working with the Technology Access Foundation for it to assist us with locating a school in our district to start in September 2020. We have signed an MOU with Technology Access Foundation. And we're working on the Community Engagement Plan now. And obviously the Community Engagement Plan is going to be the keys to success for this. Technology Access Foundation has done some pretty extraordinary work with the Federal Way School District Sahali, TAF Sahali and Federal Way. And our teachers and principals will, in fact, retain their collective bargaining rights. And TAF will have input because this will be a different model. And frankly, folks, we need to try new things to see if they work and address needs in our schools. Last, we brought up community workforce agreements again. And we need to follow up that work session that we had, get the information that we requested, determine what our next steps are, whether it's a task for us, whether it needs to be a resolution, keeping in mind, of course, the costs and our bandwidth and our, uh, CTE programs. Because it could be a beautiful thing. And with that, we're gonna take a stretch break until 5:30, when public testimony starts. And we have a packed public testimony calendar. And I would make a personal plea to those folks that have already testified once, twice, three times, whether they might cede their time so that one of our folks on our 38-person waitlist might have an opportunity to testify. Thanks.